PM or community hall tonight. So our, we don't do the pledge of allegiance. So our first item is would be our council rules and procedures. Things that we do not have. Any form of rules and procedures within our council. We really have a hard time. Governing our council, governing the actions of the council. And things like that. So I believe the court is given, brought, or given two different. Items for discussion on is the working cities model. And the other one is a model from Omsville. The Omsville one, I believe, is very lengthy, but it sounds like we have to. I mean, we can build ours off of a, basically like the League's model, which is pretty much. A generalized idea of how the council should function. But there. What they should be, how they should be following. So we're not going into the issues that we've been running into of. Not having anything set where we can't, where we, where we can say, yeah. Whatever, I don't know the best word without. Getting into things, but it's basically a guideline. That says what you can do, what you can't do, what you cannot do. Just about every other city in the state, probably in the whole country, does have some type of rules. A lot of it does come from, or we can adopt Robert's Rules of Order. Years ago, Jake came to council and said, well, if you're about to adopt the Rules of Order. It's just kind of a point where we do need. Some type of council rules. Like have a discussion on how the council feels. With moving forward. See, we need something.
I, on councils before, we did use. Robert's Rules and they good there. I mean, if it looked better and smoother than. And it is a good idea because they're tried and true.
Right. And the reason why. This has become a concern and an issue is because. I believe the courts worked back as far as she could. Nothing has, I mean, yet formally adopted. It's not, you just don't revert to it. We kind of have been trying to implement things to it, but really. Without counsel adopting anything, we can't. We have nothing.
Do we have to go through the charter and amend the charter? To go ahead and adapt that and place it into there? Is that part of the procedure that we'll be going through on that? What I propose that we do is that I.
Can you hear good answer?
Yeah.
I give you a model, if you pick out some things. Of course, not violating charter, but. Looking to, I made notes in both where the charter needs to be stated. So if you have a personal opinion, whether you like parts of this, parts of this, whether you do something else. Yes, you know what your feelings are and I'll just take each person's into account and give you something to vote on. And of course, of course, with attorney approval. We don't want to implement that without attorney approval. No, that's the handbook.
So that's, that's kind of priority moving forward. I would like to. Completed and presented in February. That way, that way, we have. We have the building block and we can always amend it later on down the road, but. That'd be great to have.
Do you have, Krista, do you have access to? The book so each of us can have a copy of that so.
Well, that depends on which version you would like to implement. So if you tell me which version, so like. The one I let. Councilwoman Maddox borrow was the in-between version. It's not the little thin ones that I passed out. I don't know if they ended up getting them. Yeah, that one right there. And then the version. That I have is the 12th edition, so there's a lot in here. And so if you want to go small to medium or large, I don't recommend that one because it doesn't have enough in it. That has a little more, you don't want to get so far into it that we're hanging ourselves up on procedure instead of business. But this is a very thorough.
This one is not as thorough as that one, correct?
This, um, this one I've completely gone through. I think it was a. There were a lot of things in it, obviously.
It is okay. It, it will work. And so if you want to just kind of stick with the basic building blocks, I would say that if you. If you would like to know more, I would say this one, I believe I got. Well, I got this one new at Barnes and Noble, I think for about $25, but I can also, $20, you can get them on thrift books too. And so I can get them cheaper instead of buying them brand new. Which is what I did with those there. I got those off thrift books for $4.95. And then I free wanted that. And that one was already in the office. So if we spend $20, $25 a book and it's handed out counselor to count the X time, somebody, you know, switches places. You guys just pass off just like your handbooks. It goes with the position of the person.
Yeah, this one was $11.
Okay, so. I say spend a couple more dollars to get, get a little bit more comprehensive. So if you know that that's what you want to go with, I would suggest in this. Manual that you say the most current edition or updated every, look at it every couple of years to just keep up with the times. Because, you know, if you don't end up redoing this for 10 years, let's say, at least it gives the authority to the people to keep up on. Most current edition. Have we never had any rules? Have we never?
Wow.
Not formally.
Not formally adopted. So that's why we're so scattered here what we're doing is because. Once, once we adopt the formal rule, then. States what you're.
What can and can't do. Krista, can you order one of those?
Yeah.
Please.
Yeah.
For my decision. For my position.
Yeah, I, I think, I think that would be a good idea. Does anybody have a preference? Or see things that they like out of either of these?
Those things I'm doing, don't like. I haven't had much time to go over. Um, but. There's, there's some things in here that. And both of them actually. I'd like to be able to do this without having to change the charter. Because that's two years.
No, no, you can't change the charter.
Yes.
So everything has to go based on the charter.
So like, if you're seeing things in there that you know or you feel goes against the charter, we can't implement that.
Right. So. One of them, yeah. And the LOC one, it says. Section five, number B, no council approval shall be required for the agenda every meeting. I don't want that. I want to approve it, you know, the agendas.
Well, I think that means before it comes to council. That would be like your city manager.
As a state, that's specifically them.
Right. Well, look at the section heading that you're under. Because what page are you on?
Uh, five, section five agendas. The city manager or administrator shall prepare an agenda for every regular meeting and every question by the sitting officer. By a special meeting, A, agendas and informational information for meetings shall be distributed to the council at these. A's before proceeding to meet.
Right. So I have.
And then B, no councils. But it's a general, it's agendas in general. It doesn't say a special agenda or special meeting.
No, right. I, I think that's in preparing them. That wouldn't be. Something that you, because it's talking about the city manager. What it was, what that's referring to is setting it up to the council. Do you all like that before you go to council? And we, we don't do that.
I know.
But that would be a lot of back and forth. So. When you, when you go later down the road, I think it does say changing. Changing the agenda or bending the agenda as an example.
You read both, so I kind of get confused, went back and forth.
Right. Now, the Omsville one is very, very. Involved and it's very descriptive and certainly like, it's got a lot in it, it was like 13 pages or something.
Yeah, and they took it off the League Orient City's model and then added to it. Obviously, you could tell where they've had issues, where they had to make, you know, things known. Quite a bit and sometimes repeatedly. And they've put stuff that was in their charter. In here that maybe doesn't necessarily need to be in here. I, I was just giving you like options, like here's a very comprehensive thing to. Look at, and then here's something very basic. So you have something in the middle that you want to work with. If you like the League Orient City's model, I can work that down really easy. And, and add something to if you.
I just like you, like in that section, it's a little bit more specific, you know, don't leave it. Interpretation, say, and slowly they'll go there. Um, no, well, yes. Uh, required for, for the, you know, for, and the preparing of an agenda or whatever. Did you get these packets, Anthony?
Do what?
You get to read these packets?
I, I've glanced at them. I haven't gone through them thoroughly.
So remember, if the counselors were to. Put these over between now and when would you need it? But to you to. So, February. Next week.
Yeah. So I still have to turn all of this into Mitchell. So. Not that we're deciding anything, but we have the consensus that we like the League Organ City's model.
Yeah, like.
Yeah, yeah, I do. As you can tell, when you're reading the Omsville one, there's.
They've had problems. They've had some issues.
Right. And, and the League Orient City is probably widely adopted around the state because it's, it's a good building block. It's a good, basic building block and.
Yeah, I like it.
We can always, you know.
By the eighth, I need it by the eighth. So that gives you a week. To pick out any extra stuff that's not in the LOC model for consideration.
LOC model, are you okay with? What page are you on? Still on page five? Let it eat. Are you still good with one week prior to the meeting?
Yep. Yeah, the Wednesday before is kind of usually been my. Personal preference of Wednesday before. But if you put a week in there that allows somebody else that comes after me to give them that extra day. Because it is, it is pretty involved sometimes when you're putting these packets together. Yeah.
You heard, excuse me, for a discussion on the technical rules. You know, we don't need that so formal.
I know.
Um, so then if we have to redo, that's, I mean, build it up for ourselves. It has to be done by February's meeting. Or that's when we adopted.
That's when we adopted. If you give me whatever corrections or whatever you're interested in, give it to me by February 8th. And based off of all of the input. I'll just kind of make something up. I'll send it out to you early so you get a chance to read it. So we come to the meeting in February that you already know. I'll do it over that weekend.
Yes, okay. Yeah. Yeah, I'll see, you probably might want to amend. The public comment, question number one, what two periods of public comment? I'm seven, sorry. I can jump the odds and talk to you about this.
I, okay, I do not have time right now. I'm sorry. I have, see, I have a couple of things that are, you know, because we have a two-minute timeline on number five. Two, number two speakers roster, we don't call it that. What is your thing for comment?
Two periods of public comment.
Oh, you're right. You know, right. That's what I'm saying. I'll work it down to where it fits what we've all, what we're already doing. And, and then when I send it out, if you think that there's still things that could be corrected, or maybe I missed something, then send me an email back and. Just say, hey, you know, maybe this should be changed or, or whichever. The procedure part is really short. It's the, the chapters that follow three and four. And yeah, you know, things like that. I mean, it is pretty basic. And so I feel like, you know. Something or get something to work from and, you know, revisit it later in a year or. If it's not working, what's working or it, it's very easily readable.
Okay. Thank you. Invitation, it has been brought to the court's attention and my attention. That number one, a lot of cities. Are no longer doing that invitation at their council meetings. Reason being is you're. Inclusive and excluding people, is that?
No, you're being exclusive.
You're being exclusive.
Not inclusive.
Not inclusive. To reach, that's. Question on. Our hands are changed.
It was a pledge of allegiance then.
Um, a lot, a lot of, there's more councils that still do the pledge of allegiance, but they've stepped away from the invitation. Spray doesn't, fossil doesn't. We were counting court does not, there's. It, it's a tough. Testing to kind of. Wrap, wrap around. There is the option that, like, with the court has been reading, you pulled off a website or something for, it's like a. Neutral blessing where we still do a blessing, but it's not. Eating on.
If we, if we cut out the, the beginning part, Lord, and then amen. Then either you can have that transition or not. You can just want to go to pledge allegiance and, you know.
I like having a blessing.
I, 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 we're, we're all in the same thing, but now we're on Zoom. Anybody, anybody from anywhere is to be offended.
Yeah.
All that it's going to do is. Our hands are tied at that point because unfortunately that's.
To ask council reasons.
Moving forward. Anna, you have a comment on the invocation of our meetings, things like that?
The invocation, well, first of all, you're going against your tradition that a lot of these things that. The rules you're trying to make were built on. And I think to, to. To dismiss that because someone may be offended. Is, is, I, I, I don't, I don't believe that's the right step. You got a town of 100 people here. And at any given time, 10 to 15% of the population is sitting in that room on meeting night. And that's because we have a full set of counselors. And a clerk and a mayor and a, a, a water master. So. You know, I, I don't know who it's offending, but I, I, I am not. Forbending the rules on this one. If someone doesn't want to listen to it, plug their ears.
You know, a person that personally doesn't like pledge.
We're a constitutional republic, though. I mean, it's.
But I'm just saying, if it affects, you know, it's offensive, it's offensive.
Yeah. Um, I'm the one that brought this up. Because I've been told by a couple of people in town that they, they do get offended by that. And. The League of Oregon Cities has had many city councils be sued. Because of this. And now with opening up all these Zooms and everything, anybody out there, anybody, I mean, we won't. We may not even know who it is. Can still come and sue the city for this.
Really?
Yes, it's, yeah.
Somewhere in that way around the world.
Yes, because we have one of our videos on YouTube. And so like, I've watched other cities' council meetings.
Yeah.
You know, and so anybody could do that to you. And they could, yeah, like it was pointed out, would you be okay with somebody coming in very double worshiping for the one? So you have to be over your back if you're, if you do, and all of the other stone face. So I mean, if we want you to make sure that we open up that if anybody else comes in. Whether they announce themselves or, or just announce themselves, don't even give a clerk the. Courtesy of a telephone call or something to say, okay, I'm showing up and come in here in their regalia or whatever, you know, that they may be. Using for their worship services. Um, I mean, we open ourselves up to anybody coming in here for doing anything. Or. We close ourselves down. And then we get to go ahead and wait for somebody to come and sue us.
I don't like it. I like the way it is.
We're not, we can't make decisions right now. Don't be brought to, I believe, our February council for a decision. This is just for a discussion.
Yeah.
Sorry, delete your question. The one that Krista said like last week. It, it, it isn't, but it is. I can take off the beginning board and then go into it and then take off amen. If you would like to do some sort of blessing, I would suggest something like that. And whoever, you can all pass it around. And if we agree on that blessing particularly, well, then I can laminate it and somebody can read it each time. Everybody can take a turn.
Yeah.
Yeah. A good idea.
It's, it's so unfortunate that this is where we're at right now.
Yeah, but it's a sign of a.
It's a sign of our times. It's, it's a change. We're probably not all even agreeing with it, but. We also have to fall, we also have to cover, you know, that side there by not allowing somebody the opportunity to. Present a lawsuit as to. We would probably want to lose.
The, the, the constitution states that. We're all supposed to be, you know, we're supposed to be able to. Honor every faith. So since. We're not honoring every faith. By the blessing that's being given, but choosing to go ahead to a neutral blessing. If we honor everybody at the right time.
Right time. And so what I'm wondering is if, if we address it to. Mitchell citizens, you know, instead of Lord, maybe would you say Mitchell citizens and then read it and then say, you know, thank you for coming. As a closing. Is that, I don't know if that works.
Thank you for attending. Me here physically.
Okay.
Yeah, we're attending. Um, yeah, but that's like even the pledge, when you pledge allegiance to, a lot of heavy Christians. Want to lead, but pledge allegiance to the flag. Because they have pledged allegiance to God, not to a flag. And that, and that's an object. I mean, that's why a lot of schools in the state no longer say pledge. I know our school still does, but a lot of them in the state don't.
Well, I, I. I think that was a thing a few years back to professional athletes. And I think, I think we've bridged that gap where it's more widely accepted to still recognize a flag. It's, it's, it's just we, we need to be conscientious of where we're at, who's watching.
Yeah.
Things like that because. We're just naked out there if we don't address it. So I believe it'll be on our February agenda for. A. Decision at that point. If you could, in the packet, rework the one that you've been doing since.
I, I, on that. When it comes to that, I will abstain with everything. So how I believe and my beliefs, I won't give in and. To.
But, um. I have no problem with the way anybody's gonna vote on that. It's, it's a tough pill to swallow, it is.
Yeah, it is. And I'm not, we have to get, we have to give up so much, you know, like schools, everything wokeism and all that. We had to give up some, no, I'm not.
And unfortunately, that's, you know. That's kind of out of our control. I mean, we could be in.
But we're in this control.
We could be in Iceland and still be. Consciences of.
We're in this control, Steve. We're in this control of this council. And that's what I'm saying.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I totally agree with that. You also have to remember that. We're open to. Liability in the world.
Yeah.
It's, I. I reserve for the comment of mine.
I have two things. So the first of all, fossil has assigned orders. And somebody put their own beliefs on their sign. And they were told that that was an ordinance violation that they could not. However, they won the lawsuit because it was First Amendment. So it even comes to fossil. And secondly, I spoke with a pastor. Who is in favor of removing the blessing altogether, if that makes.
Um, it's, certainly we have to guess, unfortunately, and it's not. It's not an easy one. You know, something so simple has turned into something so. Dire. Unfortunately, you know, I mean, we all know that speed on the set 55, you're not supposed to over 55. And just. Well, and you know, if you're going over speed, I mean, you, you get to, you're gonna be fine. We've been so. Naive to what everybody else is doing and how everybody else is conforming. Okay, so that will go towards February. We are at the employee handbook. There has been discussion of reworking our employee handbook. And we would like to know how to counsel, can we, just say again, how the council feels of. We worked in the handbook. If you would like to move forward with it, we can play a work session on it. Specifically on it to go over what. How, what council and how the council feels.
Oh, you know, I, I'm, I'm not making, not anything drastic, but, but some changes.
Yeah.
Some of the things on the handbook.
Do we have copies of them?
I may have one extra.
Okay, okay. That was the other. I've never seen. Ask me if, why it wasn't in the book. And it weren't in the book before, but if everybody feels like it needs to be in the book, I'll copy them off. And. In your handout. Okay.
Can I also ask, because I know I asked Steve this last September. Can we get a current job descriptions to have jobs?
Which, which job description do you want?
Yeah.
You want the one that's put out to hire somebody or the actual job description? Got to find out. We have a, um. The prior administration had whittled down the exact job description to post for.
My job.
Hiring.
That's one I've seen.
But there is one, it's what, five pages involved?
More than that, isn't it?
Five or seven pages of, of, which moving forward. But we can't do that. If, if we do, ever do have to hire any position, we do need to. Put out the full job description just because it's.
That's inclusive.
Because people need know that, you know. Oh, you're required to do 50 jumping jacks in two minutes. I can't do it. Why apply, you know, things like that. So.
Yeah, like with Terrell's job.
We need to be. But the job description needs to be what you're hiring for rather than.
Yes, that's ones I've seen.
Rather than the condensed version, just to post down.
I think it needs to be, well, somebody thinks about the job they have, they can look it up or yeah, I mean, it's, I think it's, I know with the one, the city clerk said you had to be able to dictate pages and pages and pages down, which personally, I think I have a problem, you know, which is why I didn't apply for the job. I told you that.
Um.
I know the maintenance one is very detailed. You know, check the restroom so often, do this so often, you know, I I know it's really detailed, but that's ones I'd like to see. I don't know about you guys, but.
You don't care about the fire director, the ambulance director?
That's not something we hire for though.
It's something you appoint or it's something you regulate. It's new.
Well, that's up to you guys.
Yes.
You know, I guess it all needs to be, yeah, because, yeah, because what does it take? What do you, what does it take for you to be the fighter chief? What do you have to know? What do you have to know?
It's there's a, yeah, I think you have it in here, that qualifications or for the fire chief, I saw it here, it was ringing over. Could we have just like one mind here that's kept for all of, well, which is even one handbook, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
I mean, with all the different stuff. So you're asking for?
No, do, I mean, do we have a, I saw the ambulance one. So is it all in one book or is it just some scattered?
You mean at the office?
Yeah.
It is in file folder or on the computer and the ambulance.
Cause I guess I didn't realize how many positions, you know, until I saw the the fire thing, I didn't realize.
Oh. As a city, we're we're.
Right now, we don't have a job description for fire or.
Okay.
Again, that's kind of like the rules for council.
Yeah, it's just out there.
Because you you should have something to go by to where the supervisor would like to say goes, hmm, I don't see you, you know, this is being done because I've seen, I haven't seen it. And it's it's like, you know, you're you're agreeing to follow this. Terrell, when he hires, he signs. Krista, she signed.
Yeah.
You're agreeing to follow.
Yeah.
Without that, again, we're kind of.
Yeah. Whether it's fire, ambulance, city employee, it'll hold you accountable. Yeah, that's, I think we need that held accountable.
Yes, we do. We're we're, yes.
Ready? When was the um employee handbook done last?
It was updated last, wasn't it updated? It was done in twenty nineteen and then last year we changed one piece, which was to add uh delinquent time cards as a potential reason for dismissal. That was all that was added. So it's virtually the same one that was passed in nineteen, which we had to have in place in order to get FEMA funds.
Yeah, I know that.
Yeah, I remember that.
So.
Then my question is, do we need to spend that much time instead of maybe looking at the adopting and so that we don't get in trouble for our ambulance people and for our fire people?
I think we definitely, if if the council is in agreement for that move if proposed changes from the council are minor to the employee handbook, we spend that a little more time, I think we need to dedicate our next work session to the employee handbook, that is, I think, priority for or the department said, don't have something to follow by.
Yeah. So I'm sorry. So you're saying.
At our next work session, which we already have scheduled for February.
End of February.
And every day it is, um, we work on employee handbook, employee fire EMS handbook.
Is that, is that the consensus of everyone though? Everyone wants to work on the employee handbook and the job descriptions?
Yes. Yeah.
Just so you're entering.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And so you realize that you would have to have attorney CIS weigh in on the changes as well.
Yeah, once a change.
And then coincidentally, uh, I had a call from a counselor over in Spray who wanted our employee handbook so that they could make changes to theirs, uh, they also called fossils too. Um, they're giving crystal benefits. So um, is it, we're not gonna find that in ours, but I did go ahead and send that over. But Leah thought it was from Mitchell, so we got Fossil's handbook as well.
Oh, the city, I think the city was picking money too though.
Okay, good. Leah? Leah doesn't make more than I do.
No, I didn't say money wise. I said it's a bigger city. City has more income.
It's uh, next item, are we good with that one? Next item is our mission statement. We have as a council, as a body, we need to come up with a mission statement for our vision. Being that majority of you guys are here for four years, I'm here for a minimum of the next two years. We work on a mission statement for at least two years, maybe up to five years.
Why, why does it have a title?
Well, it doesn't, but other cities like Pingo's is what, or no, that was their strategic plan.
The mission statement just kind of says where are we going? Because if, that way we all kind of align in the same vision forward with whatever that looks like. And that's been proven that if you have a mission statement, everybody sort of comes together. There's clerks that say, if I get something, not that I can do this, but they, if she gets something, it doesn't line with the mission statement, she doesn't, she doesn't even deal with it.
It's it sets our goals. That's basically what it does, it sets our goals in the future.
But I mean, that's something that's not critical, but it's definitely something that we do need to work on. So in our spare times, since we don't have so much of it, um, kind of just work where you want to see it and everybody can come together. Brainstorm. Be great if we all had the same one.
Yeah.
Mission statement.
Do we have an old one anymore? Or do we have, have we never had one? Never had one.
Something on the radar, but I want to make sure that we do get our mission statement done by March, probably. We're working, we're kind of becoming into that lovely time of the year that we all enjoy so much. So um but it's not critical as some of the other things that we do have. Any further discussion on a mission statement or questions about the mission statement? I'll begin conversation for strategic planning. That's what I so our strategic planning is a window of where we want to see ourselves in the next nine years. We all know the glaring items that we are true to our water. We're 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 all aware of that. Um, I think we need to like above and beyond that, like where we, how we're going to generate revenue for our city moving forward. Things not getting cheaper, products are not getting cheaper, wages are not going down. Product is going up, but we're, we are we're bound by our property taxes. That's not gonna change unless the state does a miracle, which is not going to happen. There is rumor, there is talk about them working on it, but probably not in our.
Nobody wants to touch it.
Nobody wants to touch it.
Yeah.
The the only thing that we can look at is um mayors had discussed a and you can't call it tax, but it's some, something that the businesses would have to do. And it basically, it's a fee. It's, it acts like a tax, but we can't call it tax. So it should be a fee that is added on to uh, our businesses within our city limits. And then may within the city limits, you would get like a kicker check from whatever it is. I'd say it's a three percent increase at higher down to the store. It's that we are ninety five percent tourism. We have a huge tourism base and we are not capitalizing on it, as they say. We do get money from uh the lodging tax, which really is not that much. Um but if we're looking to doing something like that, every citizen would get a kicker check back for that three percent they spent in that time. But you look at you know, you have ten thousand transactions a year. You might buy that as you say, you have ten thousand transactions at a business, twenty dollars each, that's two hundred, two hundred thousand dollars for one business. Three percent of that would be somewhere around eighteen hundred dollars, I believe, or eighteen thousand. Eighteen thousand dollars.
Yeah.
For one business.
And that would be out of their pockets.
That would be out of the tourism, out of everybody coming to our town.
This is pretty much like the one that they have in Ashland, is it that?
They have one in Higgin River.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah, gas station right before Mountford, the last one.
Yeah.
If you're local, you don't pay. Um, there would definitely be, I think it would definitely be, you know.
Joe Central is touring for.
A tourist that's basically.
Yeah.
Yeah, like I said, you know.
Anything but at the store, anything but.
Anything about with any business within the city that stands outside of city limits. So you would be excluded from that fee.
Um, he, but he lives.
No, no, his business. So if if your business, if your business is within here, and it it's kind of like the transit lodging tax. I mean, I I know that it was a hard pill for a lot of the businesses to understand that. They're like, well, we're not gonna pay it. It's like, you don't pay it. You pass it on to your customer. That was the hardest thing. And they're probably still not in agreeance with it. It would probably take a little bit more of bookkeeping for businesses to do that. So maybe they were, if it's a three percent fee, maybe cut the businesses a one percent of that for going, doing the extra bookkeeping work. So this.
State doesn't do that with the lodging taxes and then they're.
The state charges us for receiving the lodging back.
Right.
I don't get a small percent still. It it's something that that's been talked about in the past. And as far as hear that, where we put a levy on our water to be able to do things for our city. But then we have to come up with a reason why we we are doing a levy and here again, we're hitting our town with a fee that a lot of people can't. There there's got to be some way that our city can capitalize on Target Town having five hundred people standing around drinking beer all day.
But unfortunately, you know, the the water, in in order to maintain it, it takes money. I mean,
I mean, I know it takes a lot of money, you know, and so people are just, you know, I I know people don't agree with it. It's where I retire.
But you, we can't keep giving stuff away either, trying to get grants or the, you know.
How would the best implement this fee? So automatically add it on, if I spent, if I'm a visitor and I spend fifteen bucks at Tiger Town, they automatically add three percent?
Yeah.
Well, this is
The way it was proposed was that everyone pays it and then at the end of the year, you he, I get, I don't know how you would keep track of it, but whoever was a citizen would then get that money back, what's left over goes to the city.
So they have to be satisfied.
The tourism portion that's left over will go to the city. Tourism portion, okay. The citizens, it would go into a pool of money. It'd almost be better if it was countywide. That everybody's participating in the same thing. But if not, um, it would, the way, I'm just telling you the way it was proposed. If it was countywide, it would be based off of uh tourism, who has most tourism. So essentially, if you're collecting in Spray and Fossil, the more populous tourism would then generate this way rather than all the funds going that way.
Oh, what? So in order for this substance to say money at these places, we have to rely on the kicker coming back. But if I don't go, it'll it'll be a general saying, if I don't, I'll let's say, if I don't beat up Bridge Creek, I still get a part of a kicker back from them.
Well, see, there was also the discussing, I believe, it's like we generate like a card for the citizen.
Yeah, that's what I think would be a better idea.
And you go in to the store, you make the purchase, you show your card, even though, you know, everybody knows who everybody is, but still you're sharing card.
Yeah.
And then they hit a button that takes three percent off. That would be so much.
So you would get like a city issued card with your name on it. You got a water bill or whatever, you get a card and.
Or they, yeah, they have those in Hawaii. If you're, yeah, if you're a citizen of Hawaii, you know, they got the things and the taxes thing. Yeah, because they, yes, and it doesn't make any difference whether you're at a restaurant, a theme park, at a hotel, you get taxed. But you get the, I can't remember what they call it. It's like the, you know, um like monopolo or something like that. And it's, you know, it's like, hey, yeah, it has a, where, oh, where, where island here, so you know. And when you go to make any kind of reservations or anything like that, because we had friends that used theirs for us to um, get our hotel on the other side of the island.
Oh, yeah. Use your car.
Yeah, they went ahead and used their, um, uh, we just went ahead and did the, they exchanged um money wise with our cards, you know, at the bank. But they went ahead and booked the reservation for us and put it, uh, you know, put it for our name, but they were the ones that paid for it and everything.
Yeah, I like that part of the idea. Yeah.
Yeah. So and yeah, for there, you know, it was for the whole entire island. So all the little towns and all that, you know, but yeah, for here, yeah, that'd be great. Yeah.
Yeah.
And once you get one of those cards issued to you, you know, unless you, of course, pretty much with some, you know, with so few of us, you would already know that these people are, we are counties. So, you know, um, and it might be a good idea that even if people um, because I know people that live around Service Creek and that, that come over here and do their shopping. Maybe going ahead and issuing those cards, cards after those folks as well.
I think that's why it was proposed countywide. If the county kind of, they might have the resources to do rebates and the kicker checks and, you know, that kind of thing.
Right. We all know that Mitchell gets more tourism than Spray and Fossil combined. So we would be floating. We would be floating and nothing against the other side of the river, but.
No, no, nothing. I'm trying to pick ourselves up.
If we're, if we're doing the work, we need to keep.
Yeah.
We need to keep what's ours.
Yeah.
Yeah. You know, uh, when you guys, when the council was thinking about implementing that, I wasn't on the council before. And if you recall, I came here and asked the council, can you show me implement that? That was during COVID, maybe what's going on and he, you know, and the word got out and you know, the city was thinking about doing that. There is, it's been thrown. I I it would, it would take a lot of extra work. Like for the cards, make it, yeah, for keep the track of everything. It's gonna be a lot of people.
Put the card, have the person who would like, my mind would have my name on it. Put the card, have the person who would like, my mind would have my name on it. Have the card, like a punch, but a unique punch, I can't copy. Or something. And when the card is full, maybe you get a discount off, you know, if you have one for Tiger Town, you get a discount. You know, when you have cards totally full, you get five bucks off your meal. I don't know.
Well, no, I just feel like an ID card, like that's just it for the year. It's good, okay? For the whole year.
Yeah.
Not, not a punch card. You just, it's like an ID card.
You want to get charged a three percent tax.
Because I, I know our point of system cell device, we can, you know, we can.
Oh, can you? We're getting ready to get in.
It's. I mean, Dave, I, Dave would be the one hardest hit by it because Dave gets the most vocal traffic and gave us all four.
Oh, yes, okay.
Oh, that was very excellent.
He was, he was like, you know. Bless that man for moving to this town, because he's awesome at this town.
He is, yes.
And he is, he, he would.
Well, that's good to know because, you know, he's a major.
I don't know, I'll tell you ten of those, but when our coffee shops open, if we get two vocals a day.
Yeah, it's mostly.
We're doing pretty good.
It's mostly.
It's, and to me, that's, that's the only way, that's one of the ways, not the only way, but one of the ways for our city to get ahead. I mean, if you look at it, it's what, three cents a dollar?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's not a whole lot, but you multiply that times.
Yeah, fifty dollar bill, hey.
Fifty dollar bill can be a dollar fifteen. I mean, and that's at three percent.
Yeah.
We're not, I'm, you know.
So is that something we can kind of like put onto our next work session and kind of go forward with the strategic planning? Yeah. Keep revenue in our, in mind, because we don't have enough revenue for the things that we need.
And our, our, again, we're such tourist basin and I, I hate, I don't want to, I hate and I would not like to have to hit our citizens when we have thousands of people running on our industry during a busy time of the year. There, there's got to be a way that we can capitalize on it. There's, there is a way, there's, we just need to buckle down and get it done.
Another thing that I had kind of thought of, especially with these grants being out through like the Main Street grant, and there's a couple other ones that they're talking about. Going ahead and different proposals put together for them to go ahead and purchase a property that the city could go ahead and use for itself. I mean, it was just a thought. I don't even know who owns it, with those garages down there across from the park. Or Dan, it's. You know, if the city itself was capable of being able to purchase that, do a grant or whatever, and have it be like, I didn't know, take away from you guys already think, but for another place for people to go ahead and buy T-shirts or, you know, something like that.
Yeah, we welcome all the businesses.
And, and anything that was, um, created from there actually go right to the city. I mean, you know, for maps and, you know, um, anything, if somebody wants to be, you know, like Maha outfitters or something, if they want to go ahead and put in, sit there or whatever, you know? But that might be something that, and it could be either operated by volunteers to go ahead and lessen, you know, there of course, there would still be the need for, um, workman's compensation, you know, for them to be paid or whatever, for the workman's compensation to be paid. And then the insurance on the building itself, but it was, it's just the, it's just.
I always thought that if the city could acquire the old bank building, that'd be a perfect spot for a visitor center slash.
Museum.
City.
We do have a museum, where? Simpkinski's Rock Museum.
At the Rock Museum, it's not the city museum. My dad had a rock museum too, right? We need a museum that tourists can go to see our wares.
Yeah.
What people had to use when, I mean, my family.
There is so much history. It's just not.
Yeah, the bank building there is way too small.
For that.
Yeah.
Well, I think Dave's read them, you know, longer than that, but that's his personal.
That is property. Well, so you're along those lines. I mean, what do we feel about, you know, we'll have to circle back to strategic plan, but, but about grant writers? You know, people that have that, that are specifically. They've had a history of success, you know?
Yes.
And Oregon cities have a couple of people that have proven success with municipalities and.
Yes, yeah.
You know.
That is fun.
At the water board meeting, that's something that they're, they wanted to propose that this city entertained getting a grant writer because the grants are very wordy, they're very lengthy, they're very involved. And if you don't cross your team, you get rejected.
Yeah, they're very, very complicated.
They, some of them have hands, they're very, very delicate. No, they're lingo, you know, it.
No, a lot of it's, a lot of it's.
It's the link for Indian cities does have somebody. Um, there's also the Ford Foundation. They do have people that they are associated with that do grant writing, because I've taken one of the grant writing classes and they are very, very, very complicated.
Normally, doesn't the fee for.
No, no, that's a misnomer. You don't, they can write their fee into it, but then they don't get the grant and then what? You don't pay them? No.
But if fossil and spray, there's got to be a grant writer. They, what, they ask somebody out of town to do their, I know they have grants.
I know, but see, I feel like what's been happening is we try and rely on people, local people, and it's not, it's not working, it's not getting, you know, what it is that you're looking for. And if, and again, if you have this strategic plan, let's just say you, you said, yeah, I want a big fancy museum. And you go to Greg Smith and you say, we want a big fancy museum and here's our plan. And then he says, okay, here's, you know, a million dollars, go build your fancy thing, but we have to have something in place on, you know, what is it that we're looking for, what we want to do. And so that when this, we do find this grant writer, I can put, I can look and research. Say this one fits what we're looking for. Please apply for this one. You know, or please help me find what, you know, to, to build this big fancy museum or our water, or whatever it is.
Yep.
Yep, our waters.
Yeah.
Kind of field some of these grants, you know, and then they will probably know something too. So I would like to get some quotes and find out exactly how much it is they, they are charging. But I did look into like the ones that have a proven track record, you know, specifically with like, uh, utility work and stuff like that. Saying, oh, that should be probably one of our top priorities is, you know, funding for, for the water system. And even though the water feasibility study is not going to be done until next year, apparently. You have to have that in order to get water grants. I don't know.
It's the heater squeaking.
Often did it. So, um, not that we're making decisions, but.
But I think, I think we, we entertain the fact of, uh, some quotes at least.
For grant writing.
For a grant writer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, would you be able to get that for a third party? You know, that way we kind of get an idea of, you know, is it five hundred dollars or thirty thousand?
Yeah.
That's a big difference.
Yeah. Yeah. Do they need specific, do they need information that's specific to the city though?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that one we would supply them.
Right. So let's say you want to redo your whole water line, right? They will need the water feasibility study that our engineer is working on. If the engineer says, here's the plan for the best, you know, application, let's say we want to redo all the lines, which they're going to force us to at some point. And it's like, if we don't get ahead of it a little bit, then we're going to be caught off guard. So how do you take out a bunch of loans and there's money out there right now to do it? Who's, who's our engineer? Who's Kiko? And Doug Argo?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. And with us not getting the UEI number for so long, they switched over from Dunst to UEI. Um, it caused him to not be able to submit the grants for the water feasibility, which he is now working on. So next year.
You're being on fast track.
But as far as the strategic plan, you know, the, I guess what it is, is what is our, let's just start thinking about it again, it's just beginning discussions. So what, the community hall, you know, there's repairs that need to be done up here. Or are we doing a shed for the fire department? Are we, you know, know that we allotted money for the park, for the playground equipment? You know, all of, what is our, what is our plan for, you know, so that when we go to budget, we're looking at, like, we already have these projects in mind and this is how we're going to fund those projects. Because we can't keep doing, hey, something's broke, let's fix it.
Yeah.
Something's broke, let's fix it. And it's always a disaster.
You better go have a bake sale so that we can go fix it and done that, done that. No, that's how we, that's how kind of got involved with doing city council is because my husband went up to go see Carol when he was working up at the reservoir, because there was a lot of.
I'm going to get some water, excuse me.
Carol was offered that in the hole that he dug that was about nine feet down in the ground. And Ron came over to go kick water and so that, and he had me make some sandwiches. And he told me what was going on. And I looked at him and I said, what are you talking about? That man is knowing because of being a safety supervisor for our business, I knew that if anybody reported in that hole, our city would have been shut down.
Yeah.
That's what, why Ron took water and soda and sandwiches and stood and talked to Carol. So that there wouldn't be any problems.
Yeah.
So, no. And we had to have a bake sale so that we could repair the water line. So, yeah.
Why not, um, to raise so many? I know there's still pieces of land that Mitch owns. Why not check them to see which if we really need them or what the taxes are on them and sell those pieces of property? There are some.
The only ones that I know about are going to be used like up here where the water comes down. That's him for catch the.
Yeah, that little circle.
That's the only part of land that I.
Well, actually, Nelson, the part on, um, uh, outside of your fences. That little. Yeah, yeah, it's, there's not enough to do anything. Yeah, it's not even for a park.
I, you know, I wouldn't take that much, because that's, we, you know, we're just doing this, looking at the taxes on who owned them. And I feel surprised about the pieces, uh, Ron who lives up there uh, side towards the back of his property is city. And, you know, I think it'd be hoopless to find out what, we can do something with those. Why pay taxes on it?
Yeah. I think a lot of, a lot of properties the city owns is kind of unusable and they're really not. Yeah, yeah, it'd be illegal, a legal size law to be able to do something.
Sorry, can you?
Uh, she, she said something about like surplus saving property.
Yeah, raise money, why not? Because we just looked at the property and said, there are small pieces, maybe the owner who's connected to those properties would want to buy that.
Were you looking on the G I S map?
Would I be right of ways?
Yeah, a lot of it's right of ways and the G I S map, you cannot call gospel. It is, it's a rumor saying that.
No.
These lines are not correct.
And our city engineer said that, um, when we were talking about a partition of on Huddleston, he said, if you can avoid it, don't ever get rid of right of ways, you'll never get them back.
Yeah, I'm seeing my right of way on my property, where my house is, not the one next door. No, my, my personal, I got that right of way. I had taken off my property. So my, up, that right of way up to my back fences, the back of the gates. Only on that first piece of property of mine, not the second piece, that right of ways gone. I had taken off by the interstate border.
Yeah, I believe in that.
But my property line also goes out to that white post in the corner. Go to, you know, have that gravel field that my dad created. Half of that on my property.
Yeah.
You know, then it's right away next to it.
Doing all right, Angie? You have any comments yet? If you do.
I thank you. Everybody's kind of off track here a little bit, but.
Okay, but we're, we're working on it. Thank you.
We'll get back, sir, sorry.
So we discussed the, uh, grant writer pretty much.
Yeah.
For the water board. So we're at, um, the clerk has wants to have a discussion about having a third party do our payroll. Because every year, every payroll launching, the clerk. Please.
To separate me paying myself for transparency, I think somebody else should be doing payroll. I don't think I should be paying myself.
Would that be with just the outside source?
An outside source, I know in fossil, uh, one of the county girls does payroll.
Oh, yeah.
Is that they do taxes, you know?
Yeah.
That's kind of where I was going with. Just do have a quite a bit of reporting on taxes quarterly and, and.
And that's for the employees, right?
Yeah.
All two and a half.
Still, it doesn't make any difference.
Well, there's a lot of recording, yeah, there's three different sites you have to go on for Oregon to do the reporting and um, the federal's not, not so bad, but just to have that separation, I, it just, as much transparency as possible.
It would still be reported to us though, on a monthly thing, the payroll?
Yeah, they still have access to, quick, let's give them access and they go through there and then do their. Or you go online, it's not.
Yeah, my boss, she has about twenty-two employees. And we have a thing where it costs a twenty-nine bucks a month for all the employees. Uh, not each, but she has a thing where you take your phone, you clock into your job, then you clock out of your job and I'm like, go for this company. And this company, I'm like, does the payrolls, cuts the checks, anything else?
Isn't that what Tiger Town does? Do they have something similar?
We have a shift thing, but all our payroll is done, Sean passes them to us, yeah.
Okay.
And she does it, and we have huge servers.
Yeah.
It's, it's really neat because
Seven shifts.
If you clock in, you do your job, you clock out, you take lunch, you know, whether you pay it or not, you clock in or out of that. It watches, um, but it keeps, keeps track of when it automatically adds up down. It's not like you said, have to sit, put a report in. I was here at this place for this time. This was what we used to do. But it's done automatically, uh, that just re- that subtracts everything else.
Yeah.
But yeah.
Just like she said, transparency.
Transparency is the biggest, biggest thing that they. I, I think Shane kind of discussed that also because they just haven't seen them, right?
Yeah.
So would, um.
Yeah, that would be.
Entertaining.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So cooking right along, we're at V three. FEMA, lovely FEMA.
Well, it's kind of the strategic plan.
Oh, yeah, yes.
I mean.
Funding.
Funding, so we just, I just found out yesterday, yesterday or today, business mortgage will pay out twenty-five percent for FEMA. About two five hundred thousand dollars. I'm, I don't know where in the process that is, we're going to have a, some call with.
So.
In a second.
Yeah.
Right, so that's kind of where I wanted to start having this conversation, but in light of finding that out, I would like to get more information and then get back to you about that. Um, but, because of what I was, where I was going with this is, do, do we all have the consensus that we still want to keep going forward with FEMA? Or do we want to just try and fund it ourselves and fix it ourselves? And the reason being is that we still have that sixty-eight thousand dollars that I put out for in April. And then of course, the UBI number problem, but now they're trying to make me jump through a bunch more hoops to get the money. And, and so they told me that I need to go back and read contracts and figure out, you know, what all is required. And so they told me that I need to go back and read contracts and figure out, you know, what all is required. Which I don't have a problem doing, but they're, they're not being helpful. First it was, we don't have people to process it. Then it was something else, and then it's something else, and it's something else. And if we're gonna be spending one point two million dollars on this Nelson Street project. Uh, it does need to be fixed, but I just don't know where you guys are around with that. Because I, I feel like every budget, you know, it's like, well, this is something that'll never happen, but it's not, it's not anything that we have control over.
It's, yeah, it's. I've been on, I mean, Kristen's down projects and she's been hired. You're on what, your third? Contact, I'm on like my seventh contact, different contact. And it's like every time you get a new contact, you gotta start the whole process over. It's like.
Well, so, so I, I call it FEMA. So FEMA gave it to OEM Oregon Emergency Management. And so if the check will come from Oregon, once the funds are released from FEMA, and they're the ones that have to approve. Project in order for us to go forward. And so Doug from Hiko, he submits the project. FEMA says, I know, we don't like that. Go do something else. And so he comes up with something else. And then the project keeps getting smaller and smaller and smaller because they keep denying what it is that we need. By this time, now you're, you're seeing, you know, nothing's getting done on it or fixed. And so what I was wondering is like, do we want to keep going down this road? I, we know it needs fixed, but it.
There, there was conversation with the prior mayor. And it was a discussion that was had, and I believe it was, take the money that. Oh, that gave us to repair Huddleston Corner. Don't do the FEMA project, which is the, to. Contain the water, things like that. And at that point, I think we were advised not to do that because if we ever have another issue, we go screaming to FEMA. You had this chance to fix it in, you know, between eighteen and twenty-two. I don't, I don't know what would happen if we had another incident right now. They did the same thing. Well, you'd have to find a new way up the hill plus, I don't know how that would affect our FEMA project. Again, we've been told this project, the FEMA project probably won't be done this year either. But we do have a meeting with OEM. Brian Friedman, who's our OEM guy, and there's three, a couple of people involved, so. I think we're gonna get a little more information because.
What is the Oregon State Street funding? What is that supposed to go to? What can it go to? Okay, so I mean, go now.
So I, I need to get a little more clarification because the way the budget was done the year before. When the previous clerk was here was payroll was cutting out of that fund. For that are like highway money. I don't believe you can do the payroll with that. And so it's all just street funds coming from the state. And I think there might be a gas tax, but then.
But it can be high street, it can be Nelson. Okay, that's what I wanted to know. That's quite a bit of money.
Because the way that it was done is that your LGIP fund was. What we are calling the LGIP fund was being held under street fund. And so that's where the, um, our financial review by Chris Cooper needs to make that change. From it, it didn't make sense. All the money's being held under the street fund. Instead of your LGIP fund, roll your state ones coming.
Yeah, cause in this last report you put in those.
That's, that's why I put that highlighted in there. It's not correct until the financial review is complete.
Again, something that hasn't been known, but I did. Have a street maintenance repair. Schedule, um, I have directed, there are means to get a schedule going. Either a semi annual or annual at least, uh, annual. That way we can dictate when we go ask for money. We can say. Our real integrity of this is on this case. Without that, we can't really even ask for money.
We do have a pothole on Hudson High. It's one stupid hole, but there is a pot, it doesn't get filled up, a tendency, it's gonna be.
Right, and it, it's the same thing with our water. If we don't, if we don't have a survey or tracking of our water system, it's kind of hard to go ask for money. If we don't have a type of road maintenance log where we can say. You know, the condition of the road on High Street was subbar or whatever. And it's, I think I've got, it's been pushing for it for a few years. And I know it's been, again, talked about for a few years.
As far as FEMA goes. Um, when I was talking with Krista the other day and she had said something about that. We have representatives, state representatives. And that's what I told.
Well, I think, I think I kind of took your energy and I kind of.
And what I do know about FEMA, I mean, what little I know about them. Is it seems that like they change directors and they change project managers and they change contact people. A little bit. Some people change their pet bedding, you know? So, um, you know, with these people being, you know, with all of these. All this being put on small cities, it appears to me that the federal government. Doesn't have a wherewithal what happens with people like, you know, small communities like this. And absolute need. So then just pushing things off all the time. I saw that last thing from the Hiko where they were talking about that, oh, on the corner there, that the, the. That conduit pipe that they wanted to put underneath there. And they turned it down from, they turned Hiko down from it and said, oh, no, that's not what you need. And that's because. And Hiko had to go back and say, you don't quite understand. Take a look at the pictures basically. And yeah, there isn't enough, there's no place for it to put anymore over the top. So this is what we have to go through. So for them constantly saying, no, what is it?
There'll be five years, good Friday.
So four years. Four years, that's right. It seems to me that. That's when I would be reaching out to Greg Smith.
I think you did, you did ask for, she did ask for a meeting.
We have a meeting with Hiko and OEM about that on the second.
And then did you request any of Greg's?
In regards to that.
Well, not specifically. I wanna, I wanna have this meeting so that we're all on the same page. Because again, it's the, it's the same thing where it's like they, they give you the forms, I fill out the forms and then you don't hear from them. And I, I emailed this particular person, I think, four or five times in January. Saying, please follow up, when can we have a call, what is going on, where's our money? And it wasn't until I got ahold of the boss yesterday and said, hey, look, listen here, we, we are still missing our money. Then he calls me, he's like, oh, I was just getting ready to call you. So anyway. So the second, I'm hoping that we can, we'll have another meeting. And we've, we were doing this when FEMA was still involved. We were on weekly calls or semi-weekly calls where everybody was all on the same page. And so because FEMA's not requiring that, we're not getting that accountability, I think, with everybody that's in. You know, in the mix here. So we'll have that, hopefully they'll have a better update for you after that. Let's keep it in our back pockets that. If, if we're, if we're gonna keep moving forward, which we probably should, but if we're going to. You know, maybe we look at like, even if it's taking out a loan, nothing would make the citizens more happier. Than to pave Huddleston and pave High Street at the bare minimum, at the very minimum. You know, because we know that even if we pave Nelson, they're, they're not paving the other half. They're not, they're only paving that, that third section along the sidewalks. They're only gonna cut it out, fill it, they're gonna give us nice stuff to look at. So you'll, everybody will drive on the sidewalk side. Because that'll be the nice side for the one side of your vehicle. So they're not even doing most sides. No, because they, that keeps scaling down the project.
Put that video out, the kids across the street there, when it did and filmed. And it had sound on that thing. So you could hear the rocks and everything going down that.
They classified that. Even though we all know as locals that, that was not pristine roadway prior to the flood. But they can say that that was damaged by the flood. Right, because there's a question up here on the corner of the road starting to slow off. Put night in. No, you can't prove it, so.
And so, and so again, we can go down this grant writer section. We didn't get the small city allotment. So we don't have that funding because they said we still have funding, even though we used it to pave Main Street. We kept telling them, we, we used up that grant. And for some reason, I, I don't know. I think it wouldn't take that. If we paid off our bridge, so again, you know, we tried to grant me, but I really suggest that we look into. You know, like just taking out a loan and paving streets.
Before a fifty-year loan or something?
It's still in, it would be done.
Being a tight street, there's probably money for, through schools.
We can also, we can also talk to Ryan, I'll, I'll make a note on here to see if there's any sort of an extra street funding. I keep my eyes open, but I, I seriously consider, it seems like we're going into the spring. It wouldn't be all that much if you want to take out a loan and get something paved come spring.
The same school grants would not help that.
It, again, it's kind of hard to prove because we don't, we don't have a lot of walking kids and you don't have sidewalks and, you know, things like that. Which they will pay for sidewalks, because right now the way that it's worded is that the residents are responsible for the sidewalks. When we do it, are we gonna, are we gonna say, all right, everybody on that side of High Street, put in for a sidewalk?
But they're crumbling. There's drainage issues and everything.
So it, would everybody be, or would it, would it be kind of on the same wave like that, like if we got some quotes to entertain? Uh, because you already got the one when Tywater was here for High Street. It's not a written one, but would you guys entertain something like that, some quotes about just paving all the streets?
Uh, Nelson, Huddleston Heights, High Street. Okay, um, again. I know there's only three, four houses up there. Well, two at the moment, but the four lots. What about Nelson going up to go? Cause that is, that is a city road. It was paved, it sounded break down badly.
Are you talking the lane right here?
Yeah, that little tiny section going up to Ron's house.
Well, then you got Sasser, and then you got the one in between these two as well.
And of course, then you have to do Rosenbaum.
Rosenbaum. I know when, when Tywater gave me the bid to do High Street, it was to grind down the existing and reuse it, reformulate it. And I think, I think Doug could be something like a hundred and seventy thousand. Might do that once last year. So with that, you can probably assume the same amount to do from Maine all the way up around to High Street. So you double that, you're like, when prices going up somewhere within the neighborhood of four hundred thousand dollars just to do from Nelson all the way up and around to the school. No, and I'm not, I'm not a pavement contractor on going out is what Doug said for High Street.
Yeah, cause it makes no sense to do half the street.
Somebody's been here longer than me. As far as I know, there has been zero done to our streets. I mean, if, if it comes into it, we do have to get a loan, a small loan. We're gonna be paying, you know, I don't know how much it would be, but still, it's a long-term loan, zero interest. That our community deserves new roads.
Yeah, once I knew we can make, keep, keep on maintaining, you know.
Well, we don't get a lot of traffic, really, on Main Street gets most traffic.
I think High Street dealt with the school buses.
There should be something that school can help with. Nelson too, because there, they use that road, the buses use that road.
Would, would the council be willing to talk to the school? Um, cause their budget season's coming up as well.
Still, what is Anthony? Okay, good. Um, but we are to our ordinances.
Uh, just, just again, to kind of reiterate the nuisance ordinance. Um, it's a disaster.
Jeremiah has said that he really cannot, it's so scattered that he cannot. It's so open for interpretation and he really can't enforce it. So I think we definitely need to spend time. Because that's our biggest issue right now is nuisance. I was down here meeting the electrician this morning, there was two dogs that came from down there. They cruised up here, they went over here, they went, they were just all over the place.
So then, uh.
I, I, I've talked to one person, did give it, and they don't want to get involved.
Yeah, and I know concerns like my coworker Tina, she has her dog on a leash. Because, just because she does, she's responsible. She came from Arizona, you know, and. She has been out walking her dog in her yard and had multiple dogs. To come and try to attack her dog, you know.
You ever see a little orange in Mike, shall we meet ever?
No, one was, I think they took Meg, was Meg across the street, was one of them. That actually was one that attacked her dog, but then other dogs, there's been several dogs. Yeah, just running around all the time.
So I think that should definitely be on our, so a great work session to at least get that ordinance redone. So we do have.
I can reach out to the Clerks Association and get, uh, ordinances for nuisances.
Do you want to put that, maybe doing a, it's a nuisance, but there's other nuisances, nuisances too. Do you want to put like an animal nuisance as opposed to a noise nuisance or other type of nuisance?
I think when there are nuisances, they will break down, you know. Yeah, but it's all under that nuisance umbrella, so.
Can I imagine something that's not even on the agenda, but kind of under nuisances? Um, the junk behind the hole in the wall has been mentioned to Jeremiah. I firstly, down the highway, I realize the police don't have a lead on it, but behind Gabe's place, horrible looking. If you're going down the highway, I mean, it looks like a junkyard. From the road, from the highway. I mean, don't they call it in as a complaint, I can, but I mean.
I, I actually think that they're impeding on the city property also.
Yeah, and I realize Gabe, if he hasn't already bought it, he's in the pockets of buying that property you mentioned with the garage and the mobile home. Um, but even if it's passed in front of that, that's ugly. Your guys have pallets, you have a big stack of pallets.
It's our industrial area.
I mean, it just, well, yeah, but he's watching what the people who inherited it. But I mean, it's just. But I mean, it's just. Well, before, it tells him about the future, but it's well, but I mean, just a pile of pallets, I was. And he'll just, well, both them being there, but it's just ugly.
Well, some of the ordinances that were turned in to the Sheriff's Department were not followed up.
Yes, I, yes, and I, yeah, because I, the, the property that burned, I realized the property in the middle, not the one on the end, on the corner. Was sold to somebody out of town, or possibly not a state. But my concern, and I tried and dragged one piece out, I shouldn't have. The tin, those lying ones, we had a couple weeks ago, there's a big huge piece of rusty tin and went into the ditch. I'm worried about it blocking the culvert.
That one was turned in as well.
I know, I, and I talked to Jeremiah about looking into it, and I said, go and tell him, I said, you can go outside and buy, bought it.
I think, I, I do, I do believe that we are allowed, I can check the legislature if you like, but I believe we're allowed to order a dumpster. And do the cleaning, and then bill the property owner.
Well, there's two, there's two different properties, okay, there's one on the corner and there's one at first.
Whichever.
I, I know, I know. But yeah, that stuff flies around. I mean, that tin, I picked it up off the road several times last time. And now it's back next to the wall. But yeah, there's two, not just two pieces of tin in the ditch. But I mean, it's just so like, I'm worried about more so of that blocking the culvert, we get a lot of water.
I'll check into that.
I do believe that culvert's.
It's plugged already, yeah.
And it's stored drains.
That big culvert is.
Well, it's just pieces in front of it, it's really gonna block it, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's plugged already.
Yeah.
It's plugged literally three quarters of the way through. Hosing it out.
Well, to this thing, Tara was small.
Okay, so. As the. Nuisance ordinance is definitely, that's first one we need to, you know.
Yeah. I am still working, if you want me to continue. Um, I call the short term rentals, it's, I don't want to ID it as a B and B, what toy or anything like that. I called, I'd label it short term rental, I'm still working on that. Um, the one that has to be done by July, the homelessness one, that one. I got an LOC example, but we need to be very specific on that one. We need to ID places that people cannot squat, put a tent, whatever. And I have a big list of detailed stuff, um, like, they can't do it on. Uh, private property for liability and security reasons. Uh, walking paths, it's tripped, they have to be so far off a walking path, sidewalk, uh, the state has somebody feet off the roads. Um.
Can you send me that? Oh, I thought you said you got it from LOC.
You sent me a copy, I got a rough copy from LOC.
What is it?
Homelessness.
The homelessness?
Okay.
But, oh, okay, I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about Airbnb's.
Oh, Airbnb ones, um, uh, hood city, whatever, I got a copy of that one, okay, but. I'll, I'll send it back to you.
Okay, no, no, I, I know what you're talking, so, but when you're talking about the private property, you're talking about homelessness.
We're talking about homelessness, we don't want people on, we don't want somebody squatting on somebody's private property.
Right, it isn't, wasn't that put on radar because right now they.
It wasn't, you don't have a policy in place.
That's what I'm organizing, it's a policy.
And somebody's squatting, and you don't have anything to fall on.
Yeah.
They can say we can.
Yeah, I don't have that rule, um, we can't, we can't have people squatting on graves and slopes because of fall and. Evolution issues, we can't have them near a river or some place that might flood.
Can we get this, the homeless portion and Airbnb to the next session?
For your ordinances.
Yeah, I'll, I'll have them pretty well worked out.
Perfect.
At the end of February, right?
In February.
I will have it worked out.
Urban funds. That is, uh, about five thousand.
It's four.
Okay, so what's our fund, I knew, what's our?
Oh, okay.
We received COVID money, and that's where we got. All of our equipment, like, uh. Handle, or most of handlers, pickpocket dispensers.
Okay.
Ambulance did get a foger to fire the ambulance, um, everything like that came through COVID money because. They were specific on waiting for money for it. I believe we received. We didn't receive our full alignment, so they sent us, or they're sending us more money. And we received the extra money.
Yeah, it was like four thousand one hundred and some change. For eight, eight thousand eight hundred and six. We received thirteen thousand four hundred and thirty seven dollars and ninety six cents. Four thousand over, four thousand six hundred and thirty one dollars and ninety six cents.
So with that. I think. We need to entertain updating our recording equipment. As I've listened to this, I've listened to Zoom. It's virtually impossible to. What goes on because of our. Equipment. A lot of places with their COVID money, they've, means that we have to have Zoom by law. What they've done is they have gotten a monitor put on the wall. Um, which I think goes through, that works through it. That way.
If you use Zoom.
You use Zoom, but you have a monitor instead of something like this.
Yeah.
You're seeing, we're seeing people up on a, play a forty five, fifty five inch monitor, which they see a TV.
Yeah, we, and then we could use that actually for.
We could use that for training.
Training sessions.
People, if somebody wants to have a conference, or set up for a conference. Walmart, it'd be pretty simple to incorporate.
That's a neat idea.
I think unfortunately, that would be great to put a portion of that money to that. The other idea, we could have got a, um, overhead projector, it's on the ceiling, but. Those, yeah, basically they're doing it away because you can't find the bulbs. Yeah, that's right, at Mitchell's Alley. So that was, that was one of the ideas, and then I believe the court sent out the owl, which is a three sixty recording device. Um, it's been incorporated in a lot of the cities, it is a.
I asked what everybody else was using, and that was the feedback that most people are using owl.
Was there a cost on that? I think it's about eleven hundred, that's why I didn't stand this.
But it's, it reduces your background noise, it is.
Holds the person into focus who's speaking, it keeps a three sixty panoramic, so the people are here and here. You get that panoramic plus person up front that's speaking, and it automatically detects by AI who's, who's talking, so it shoots across.
She's a laser at you, if you talk to them too much, it's. So, and, and a monitor is probably six, seven hundred bucks maybe.
Well, and at that, I mean, I don't think I'd be able to donate our one, it's upstairs.
That's not very good.
Are you sure?
Yeah, but it's. We have a fifty five inch flat screen that we're going to get rid of, it's, it's pixelated, I mean, we can try it, I don't even know. It's, it's a big one.
Yeah, that one I have is still in the box of the point.
Forty five inch.
But.
Yeah, pixelated is where, like, if you zoom into something really far and it looks all. Yeah. It's like it just pixelated out too much, the biggest thing is just for everybody, if somebody appears on Zoom and they wanted to give you a presentation. That you can see them, if your attorney's there, you can see them, they can see you.
Cause right now, you can, if somebody runs to show you a document right there.
You can see it, yeah. Anthony, you are a shadow.
So.
Pardon me?
What do you think about getting a monitor?
Well, I, I, I didn't think council was supposed to make any decisions tonight, and it seems like.
What you're feeling, what you're feeling, yeah.
Oh, you know. Personally, I think that. Until we get a fiscal audit. That I think all this other stuff shouldn't even be, it's a great thing to look at, but. You're talking about things here that cost a lot of money, and I'm, I'm, I'm for putting the skids on everything, and we, until we get that fiscal audit.
And that's gonna, that's tax season, a few people I have contacted, I'm booked up, I'm working on that though.
I thought you asked me to do that, so now you're doing that. Is it, I don't need extra work if you're gonna do it.
Well, I'm just looking into the cost of that, I'm looking into it, I'm not actually. Now doing it or sending it up or, I'm just looking into it, that's what, that's what I thought we could do.
Right, but you asked me to do it, so if you're gonna do it, then that would have been nice for you to say. Take that on and I'll present it to council.
Okay, more together, it's up to you.
I just, you know, because I get my directions from council, so if. There's other things in the background, it'll be helpful, and I don't have to do that.
Okay, I will look into it, and say, it's really hard right now, because a lot of them are booked up, it's tax season. But, yeah, I'm looking into it.
Thanks, Kay.
And so I guess you're referring, are you referring to the financial review we're doing right now, or are you guys, the audit budget?
And I don't know if the audit will be able to be done before we need to get the budget done, because I think these people are booked, they're accountants and. You know, it's tax time, so, gotta get done soon, but.
The project won't get done until August or September.
They said after April.
They'll talk with you about it, but for them to actually get it done, a vehicle to present it to council.
Oh, yeah.
I guess, yeah, September.
Yeah, so they have to get all paperwork. Yeah, I missed it. Find out who and what and how much, and if they can do and give it cost, no, I missed it, that's, I'm just checking into it, looking into it.
Well, they're gonna do a little research through the city to find out, you know. It's, they're not yet, I don't think they're gonna be able to give you a.
Price, because it's, they can give you a price for it, I don't know, but, you know.
So are we moving on to? City seal?
Yeah, I put it in the packet and, uh, we didn't really discuss it, but are, if you notice on the. Or certificates, your council certificates, it says Town of Mitchell, and that was before we were a city. I'm just bringing it to your attention and the event that you feel that we should be the city of Mitchell instead of the town of Mitchell.
Something.
Well, it's, it's not even counted, it's hard to do, but. It's not, it's not meant to be that big of a deal for the mounting portion of it, just. It's.
It was probably like made in nineteen oh one.
There we go, in the museum.
I'm telling you. I've been talking to Jake about a couple of his buildings.
There is money, uh, you know, like, for historical money, there seems to be, there's always available historical funds. People want to have museums, keep history and, uh, things like that.
So with the city seal, what are you asking for, just to entertain getting one that says the city instead of town?
Well, I'm just, really just kind of bringing it to people's attention, and.
Distinctions between a city and a town, population.
Uh, incorporation.
Incorporate.
Yeah.
There can be a town. Once you turn, incorporate, you turn from town to city.
So this is before it was incorporated, which I think the first incorporation was eighteen eighty seven. And then it was incorporated, this used to be, uh, Creek County, and then when it changed from Wheeler to Creek, they incorporated again into Wheeler County. So somewhere before eighteen ninety seven, this one. That's still embossed. Uh, it's just down still. It's, uh, this.
It's in Bowser. Which.
Yeah. And we, what we didn't, sorry, we didn't discuss the computer thing with our fund. I think most people are of the position, get rid of those Chromebooks, and so I would like to present. You know, four hundred and fifty bucks for a laptop that has high screen, I mean, best to use. That's cheap, those are. That's really cheap, and then because. Looks like you're in some paper, yeah.
Well, that's the idea, is to. Instead of creating. Hundred and twenty pages of paper for counselors. I mean, how much, how much money are you gonna save in paper? A lot. Right, because I think what she was, again, is the one on the right hand side is mine, that she got for me. It has word, it has everything on it, but. We, we kind of dropped the ball when we got the laptops to go to money. We should have been more diligent on purchasing something that we can work with. It's canceled, you know, if we run, look, go down that road, there is a, I don't know if you'd ever get it, how that, those Chromebooks, but. It can be put on a government site, or something.
No, they're, they're, I tried to put the buyback amount in there, and there's, it's zero, they are worthless, oh really, they are absolutely worthless, wow.
I don't even get them online now. So basically, between six laptops, the owl and a monitor, that would pretty much, our, our performance would pretty much cover it.
And I'll fund you already, yeah, yeah, okay.
And that part of me was facing it for COVID related. I have actually started using my laptop more on my phone for certain businesses. So, so much easier to.
Yeah.
To work with, and then we're gonna, hopefully, everybody, all the counselors get on board with bringing them with. Instead of having packets.
Yeah, we'll have to do packets for the audience.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, but you're gonna, you're gonna cut down fifteen hundred pages of paper per meeting.
Yeah.
That's what, three rings of paper, how much is a ring of paper?
A case of papers, like, thirty five bucks.
Yes.
There's six rings in there, so it's still, it's.
It's the E. It costs me eleven hundred dollars every time I order E.
Wow.
Or two blacks and a red and a blue and a yellow, eleven hundred dollars, that's crazy.
In, in the long run, we're gonna, it's free money that was given. And we're gonna be saving money throughout the years by twenty less paper.
Yeah, yeah, and there is a Word Excel program that you don't have to pay yearly on.
Uh, that's what I have on my computer, it's just a lifetime download. At, it will update, and you know, when things, you know, when they update something, make it new and better, and that's done automatically. Instead of going to like a Microsoft three ninety five, or, you know.
The Microsoft three sixty type is ninety nine dollars a year.
Yeah, I know, she, she thinks she goes, she's gonna, are you gonna knock on for something?
No, I. No, I, they sent me a thing saying I can download it and it's lifetime download and they updated, who is they? Um, I've done a Microsoft, I have to look back and see where I got it from.
It's Word, correct?
It's Word, Excel, PowerPoint.
But it's not, but it's not Office. And you send out a lot of things on Office, which is a large cost as opposed to Word, yes.
Right, with our, with our, now, you can't open J page or something, there's things that are sent out from either other government agencies, things can't open.
Cause it's set for students, those, the textbooks are set for students, and so, that's why they're on it.
So if you would like to get a presentation for our February meetings on that, if counselors and greens please entertain the idea.
Of laptops.
Of the Dell laptops, the monitor and the owl.
And the printout of the three sixty-five. That Microsoft office, so everybody has it on their laptops.
City issue, so again, if you're.
Yeah.
That'd be really, I think that'd be a really good thing, you mean, that way you could go ahead and have anything that was still on the computer going to the next person.
Oh, yeah, that's, you know, I mean.
That's how it should be.
You know? Yeah, as long as you clean up your junk, you know, as long as you don't leave a dirty computer.
Really, that, when somebody read some of those movies.
Their training video.
That's right.
Is there anything else we need to discuss tonight?
The last meeting was three hours and forty minutes, and I know when I first got on the council was entertaining, if it's gonna be a big. Packet or something, breaking into two meetings, I'd love to do that because three hours and forty minutes.
Hopefully not future ones, hopefully not, yeah.
Well.
I agree.
Yeah, yeah, it has been discussed about bringing up in two meetings. As, as the mayor, our last meeting, I feel as mayor was one of our best meetings.
It was, it was a good meeting.
Things went smooth, we didn't really get off track a lot, we stayed focused, it was a big meeting, did have a big packet.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, a lot of other communities are going into a, a. Two-time a month. I don't know, like, if, if we would need a twice a month meeting, every month or maybe every other month to kind of break up. Because I think these work sessions are very essential because we do a lot of our discussion amongst ourselves where we're not, you know. Sha- shadow meetings, you know, going on and people are discussing, and then we're, we're, you know, where we're moving forward with our next meeting, what we're gonna discuss. So it's, it's, it's definitely something that we should consider.
Good.
Because we are going to have, there are gonna be times where we don't have a big one. But there are gonna be times where we're inundated with.
Yeah, those, those ones are few and far between.
Yeah, and unfortunately, we're just, we've been in, um, for the past year, we've been in a cleanup mode of. Getting everything that hasn't been done for the past X amount of years, I don't wanna put a number on it. A lot of cleanup has been done, so.
And the meetings will be long if we have to have to read all these ordinances.
Is the packets go out, you read your packets. We may have to send through something, you know, on your laptop, send through it, but the idea is to. Educate yourself, be aware of what's on that packet, to where when we come in here, it's like, you know, forty-five minutes, we're done.
Yeah.
Possible forty-five minutes are done.
Yeah, that'd be nice.
That's what Sean said.
A lot, a lot of other city meetings that we've either zoomed or attended, it's like everybody comes in, their, their seats are only at one really. And we're one of the smallest towns in the city of Oregon, and we probably run the longest meetings.
I think, uh, Pineville's maximum is mile and a half.
Yeah.
But they also maintain a lot of this stuff, I mean, you're talking about parking a lot of years of.
Oh, yeah.
Just like our, our nuisance, well, how old is that, I mean, it's never been tight, a lot of our ordinances, unfortunately. What was it, Patty, we were gonna work on them three, four years ago.
Oh, yeah, I must start more than work on them too.
We've gone through quite a few of them and.
Yeah, I kind of baffled that.
It kind of just fell, fell away, um.
Yeah.
It is, it, it's a lot, a lot of housekeeping that has been done, that's gonna be done, but certainly, we're gonna get the housekeeping now, we're gonna be able to look at, you know.